All right, we'd like to call the study session for the Board of Education to order for September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Take attendance, secretary, banking room?
All board members are present with the exception of trustee Noble.
Thank you. Moving on to item number one C, Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong.
Moving on to item number two A, Public Comment. Is there any public comment today?
We do not have any.
Thank you. Seeing no public comment, we'll move on to item number three, Study Session A, Superintendent Update.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Lepia?
Yes, got a variety of items to update you on with the start of school. And so I'll actually start with a big event that occurred prior to the start of school that we've talked about, but that was, it actually occurred since our last meeting, and that was the safety training activity that occurred on August thirtieth. Again, this was in cooperation with Bloomfield Township and twelve other municipalities. It was held at our high school, and we actually practiced a live critical event at that site with all of these different agencies. It was a significant undertaking to put this on, so my sincere thanks to the staff here that put so much time into getting this ready, to have literally eight hundred employees in all of these agencies organized, and it was, it was just a significant undertaking, so kudos to them. It allowed us to do a variety of things in this, in this session, including testing out our communication systems, including our Blue Point Emergency System at the high school, our radios that we've just recently purchased. Also had the opportunity for staff to practice their ALICE training, which is the training that they have in case of an intruder at school and what they would do. We also had the opportunity to set up and think about how we would set up a reunification site and that process if we had to reunite families, parents with students. The police and the rescue staff that were there practiced a variety of things on their end that included, included their response protocols, also included their search and rescue protocols. And so it was really a very comprehensive effort to really practice if we're ready for this type of tragedy that would, that would hopefully never occur, but unfortunately we know we have to be prepared as much as possible. So I, I certainly would identify and describe the event as a success, not just in the response of our staff and the staff of the, all the different municipalities, but we learned a lot through this process. And so learned about our communication systems, where there are some holes, found some things that we wanted to address. And so, and, and I know in, in, in talking to the different police and fire and rescue staff that they learned some things also as they went through this process. And so our follow-up on this is that we'll do a debrief here in the school district, both centrally and at the buildings. And I know that the municipalities are doing the same thing because again, we learned a variety of things through this exercise that we'll want to follow up on and make sure that, that we're addressing, you know, anything that we found that we think we, we need to improve on. So a big event, a significant undertaking, and I certainly would describe it as a, as a success. Just would then lead into the start of school, which I would also describe as a success. Obviously, we are in the midst of implementing a brand-new configuration in our school district. We opened basically two new middle schools and two new elementary schools, which were middle schools. The facilities look great, so they're spectacular, and so we have a lot to be proud of when we look at this configuration and how it's going to take the school district into the future. Certainly would highlight, though, that it's a work in progress, and so there's a lot of things that we're still working on to address in each of our schools to make sure that everything is up and running. We know that the technology component is the last piece of implementation as it relates to the actual work that's done after the construction. And so, you know, we're, we're in the neighborhood, depending on the school, of eighty to ninety percent of having a majority of that technology implemented. And as Dave has been helpful in describing to me what that really means, what it means is the vast majority of spaces have what they need in, in the schools as it relates to the technology, but there are going to be some spaces that still are not functional yet, like for example, maybe the, the gymnasium or Wi-Fi connection, you know, that, that would be an example of something that would still need to be done. And so those last pieces will be happening over the next few weeks. So we're getting there. The big pieces for us when it comes to technology is cabling and networking, and so again, a lot of that cabling and networking is now up and running, but it, it also in some parts in, in the buildings still needs to be, it still needs to have that final connection. Would move on to transportation. We know that every year, transportation is a challenge for every school district as you have new bus drivers, they're getting used to new routes, they're trying to determine where the students are on the routes, they're getting used to who the parents are when they're picking the students up at the different bus stops, you know, making adjustments as we go along. I would say probably even a little bit more this year, not only because of the challenge we've had in regards to staffing our transportation department, but also the fact, again, that we just reconfigured the entire school system. And so, you know, there are a variety of changes that we have in place. So we're watching it even closer than we normally would because typically, and, and every year, it's usually two to three weeks before things are really up and sort of smooth, and we've got all of those things sort of figured out in regards to people know where they need to go and the bus stops are settled. And so that's, that's pretty normal for us, but we're watching it a little bit closer because we're finding that there are probably some adjustments based on the new configurations that we need, we can address before we get to, you know, that, that final settling down of the service. So we're pleased that we're offering full transportation service, you know, that was a question for us this summer, that we wouldn't be able to possibly provide all transportation to any student that was interested in utilizing it. We were able to do that, but in order to do that, as an example today, our two supervisors, our one retiring supervisor, actually sees out right now for COVID, so it wouldn't be her, but our existing supervisor and the dispatcher, who are the ones who are running the department all the day, all day, are actually driving buses. I mean, they're actually out there on the runs covering buses. And so fingers crossed, you know, we've been able to run, run the, run the runs every day. On occasion, you have to break down a run to make it work, but, but by and large, we haven't had to cancel runs yet, as we know has happened in other communities when they've had these shortages. So watching that very closely, and, and that's, again, pretty normal in, in a, in a, in a normal year and a little bit more intense this year. I would highlight that there are a handful of issues as it relates to safety with kids getting to school that we've been also working on up at North, North Hills Middle School, that's a brand-new middle school, and we're hearing that there's a concern about parents that are coming from the north into the school, crossing Hickory Grove and that area. We've, we've had lots of conversations. Jake and the team have walked Lost Road probably about fifty times up and down there, trying to figure out, you know, what kind of safety measures, you know, can we put in. I would just highlight that probably the thing that will help most is the cooperation that we received just this week when we contacted our township supervisor, Danny Walsh, who said she would be willing to set up a meeting for us with schools, with the school officials, but also with the township, the city of Bloomfield, and with Oakland County Road Commission, who are actually responsible for all the signs and all the, you know, any kind of safety equipment, they're actually the ones who provide that. So, so we're going to be set, setting that up at North Hills, for North Hills, we'll have, of course, the staff, we'll have our staff, we'll have our SRO officers, because obviously this is a safety issue, involved in that process with us to try to come up with the best scenario that we can in regards to students that would choose to walk to school. We would highlight that the short-term solution there, though, is that students can't take the bus. And so there's not a student that goes to that school that can't take the bus if they feel anxious, if their parent feels anxious about them getting to school. And so that's the best short-term solution for us. Having said that, we're still going to work, though, on doing whatever we can to make it as safe as possible for those that may not be taking the bus transportation. Two other major events that occurred, one yesterday and one will be next week, and that is the celebration of the opening of our new middle school facilities, North, last night, had a very, very nice turnout there for parents and students to come and tour the site, and that was, so it was just very exciting. Obviously, I'm sure for those of you who have been around for a lot longer than I have, remarkably gratifying to have that experience, and we're looking forward to doing the same thing next Wednesday at South Middle School, they all have their opening. Again, a reminder that the PTOC has their back-to-school event next Saturday, that's the twenty-third. A lot of events for families that will be there, it's a, it'll be just a remarkable time, I know they've had great turnouts in the past, and we're looking forward to next Saturday welcoming families to our Welcome, Welcome Back to School Celebration and the high school football game that will occur directly after that. From a, from a standpoint of the bond issue, we're actually now, believe it or not, it feels like, you know, we're, we're still, and we are still working on finalizing a variety of things that we've been implementing this summer, but now we're actually in the planning phase for the facility renovations for next summer. That has to start now so that we can be prepared to have those bid packets go out and have all that work done, so when we get ready for next summer, we're, we're ready with the contractors to have them come in. So if you remember, the big things happening next summer are the renovations to all of our elementary classrooms, and so that'll be a significant improvement in every elementary school to have all of those classrooms basically redone. And also, the other big project, of course, is the wellness center that will be going at the high school, so excited about those projects also. Upcoming is the financial audit, and so we'll get a snapshot of where we're at in October, and we're looking forward to getting that information to the board because, again, from a planning standpoint, it won't be that long before you're starting to think about budgets for, for the next year. And so you'll be getting an update on where we ended the school year up and where we're sitting financially. Big picture looks pretty darn good right now, but, you know, more details to come with that. And then just what last recognize, congratulations to the high school. The U.S. News and World Report does their annual ranking of high schools, and out of one thousand two hundred high schools here in the state of Michigan, our high school actually moved up, they were ranked forty-ninth last year and they're ranked twenty-sixth this year. So certainly a point of pride for our high schools, and congratulations to every, every staff member at the high school and everybody that supports them. And that is my report, President.
What a great way to end your report, I would say. Thank you for that, Dr. Lepia, Lepa. I said every, I say it wrong every, every time, and I'm correcting myself. Thank you so much for that. So Superintendent Search Update is item three B, and at this point in time, Doc, I made you a Dr. Hill. Trustee Hill and Vice President Kumar and I serve on this particular committee, and we are actively engaging with MLI, and we're looking forward to providing additional updates at our future meetings. So right now, we are continuing to engage and in the process, so we're excited. Any questions? Amazing. All right, moving on to item number three C, our sinking fund millage.
Thank you, and I know I just talked a lot, and I'm going to talk more. But this is the kickoff really to our campaign now, we have a millage election that's coming up in November, and so it's going to be important, I think, at least to spend some time at each of our upcoming board meetings, because our, our responsibility now, you guys did all the hard work last year in regards to preparing and putting this on the ballot, but our work now is to make sure that we're informing our community in regards to what the sinking fund is, what it means for our school district and how it impacts them. And so the district, of course, has been blessed with the support of the community for providing this sinking fund as an ongoing resource. This revenue has to specifically be used for ongoing repair and renovation of our schools, it cannot be used for anything else. When I say repair and renovation, that includes equipment and technology, along with renovations of the actual facilities. It's called a sinking fund. We could probably have an hour discussion of why they determined the name sinking fund, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but that is what they call it, it's called the sinking fund, which is really sort of a pay-as-you-go ongoing revenue source to do renovations to your schools. And so the voters here in Bloomfield actually passed this initially in two thousand and five. That was a ten-year millage at that time for one point five mils, not a significant millage amount, but it means a significant amount to the school district as it relates to resources, and certainly is a relief to our general operating budget so we can provide programs for kids out of that and not feel this pressure if there are major renovation components that have to be taken care of. So it's been, it's just paid great dividends over that period of time. The sinking fund actually has been renewed now twice, first in two thousand and fourteen and then again in two thousand and eighteen, and when it was renewed, the board actually went back and asked for less millage from the community for the sinking fund because it was starting to plan for the bond issue in two thousand and twenty. And so that was all part of the planning process, and so the millage that was asked for in two thousand and fourteen was point seven four mils, less than one mil, and then just most recently, point seven one mils, again, less than one mil for the sinking fund. Again, this is separate from the two thousand and twenty bond issue, so people are very familiar, obviously, we've been talking a lot about the major renovations that have occurred with the bond issue, but it just would remind people that that bond issue was specifically to support the long-term configuration changes in the school district, and that included basically two new middle school facilities that were put into place with this new configuration. We needed to add classrooms for kindergartens to make sure that our elementary schools would have enough space to meet the needs of all the students that would be at the elementary schools. And so that was, you know, a big chunk of what the bond issue was focused on in two thousand and twenty. The sinking fund, a little different from that, is about really the ongoing renovations just to keep the schools functional. And again, if you didn't have the sinking fund, you'd be trying to find funds in your general fund to actually make these renovations, and you'd be then making tough decisions about what programs you wouldn't be able to do if you didn't have this resource. So it's been just a remarkable resource for the school district. It does expire this year, and so the board last year spent a great deal of time, I've got the, the book here, you, you commissioned Plant Moran Cressa to do a, a study, and they, I think they did two or three different reports to you, the final one in the spring, to basically outline, okay, do we need to maintain and continue the sinking fund? And the resounding answer was yes, this would be a continued significant benefit to the community to renew this millage. And so we have it on the ballot for November seventh. It would, again, would be no increase, just a renewal, and it's actually, the millage is actually a little bit lower than it was with the last renewal, it was point seven one mils, now it's point six nine mils. It would be just for three years, and as the board, I'm sure, worked through this and talked greatly, at great length about it last year, with the bond issue being completed, let's look at this for three years and let's reevaluate where the school system is in regards to its facility needs in three years. So that was a smart move on the board to take that particular timeline as it relates to a potential renewal of this millage. Again, it's point six nine seven six mils, that's less than a mil, it generates about three point four million dollars annually for the school district, and again, it's going to be used for the infrastructure. And if you were looking at the average home, if you had a home worth two hundred thousand dollars in the community, you're paying about seventy dollars right now, and you just continue to pay that seventy dollars. If you had a three hundred thousand dollar home, you'd be paying about a hundred and twenty-five dollars right now, you'd continue to pay the hundred and twenty-five dollars. And if you had a five hundred thousand dollar home, it would be about a hundred and seventy-five dollars that you are paying, and you've been paying for quite some time, and it would be a renewal that you'd be continuing to pay that for the next three years. Again, I want to focus that these funds can only be used for facilities and technology. I want to share a few examples of the types of things that you have done with these sinking funds in the last several years because you've been very good stewards of this money, and so a variety of safety components you've implemented, safety film at both the high school, International Canopies, and Wing Lake. Jake, do you want to describe what safety film is?
Yeah, I mean, basically what we did at the high school in select locations at IA and Wing Lake, that was, it's a three M film that goes over the glass and it buys time, right? Nothing's bulletproof unless we buy this thick of glass. So in the event of anything from somebody accidentally breaking the window to somebody purposely trying to get through the window, it buys time, when it shatters, it stays in, it stays in place. In order to get through it, you gotta really give some effort, and that effort is wasting time instead of doing harm inside our buildings, and they're more apt to lose sight of anything inside the room because now they just lost visibility because they just cracked the whole thing and they can't see, they get discouraged and they just move on to the next room. So it was something that we had to do, especially after Oxford, a lot of, there's a lot of discussion about the glass at the high school, and, you know, moving forward, film's not allowed in, you know, with sinking fund dollars, I can't just put film at the pool because there's a glare, but the minute we call it safety film, it's sinking fund allowable. So that's one of the perks that they opened up to allow that kind of stuff.
So that's an example. Other examples, we've done roofing projects both here at the Booth Center and at the IA Academy, put new turf courtyards in at Conant and Way, we replaced the drain grating at the transportation department, we did the, we were able to do the electrical work, these were things that were not covered under the bond, for new scoreboard and sound systems at North, at North Hills and also the high school. We've been able to do some parking lot footwork over at the International Academy, and the playground work that wasn't covered under the bond issue, again, it's a great resource for us because if there are some components that we weren't able to do, we can go to the sinking fund and get that done. And I would highlight, and this is a really important component of having a sinking fund, is it allows us to take care of emergency repairs that come up, that again, would be a significant cost to our general operating budget and put real pressure on us if we didn't have the sinking fund. And so some examples in recent years of using these sinking funds, we replaced the boiler at Lone Pine, we corrected erosion issues at the high school bleachers, replaced exterior doors at, at several of our buildings, replaced catch basins at several of our buildings, and repaired a water main break at Lone Pine. So it's just, it's just such a great resource to have that particular dedicated money to do those types of things, and people will want to know, well, what are you going to do then for the next three years as they come up, what other kind of projects are you looking at? And so again, I would just highlight, first of all, under safety and security, we're looking at a couple of parking lot renovations that wouldn't be covered under the bond that we can look at doing with the sinking fund. The security film that Jake just described, we'd like to do that in more places in our schools and, and add that in, in more of our facilities, and then also because we can do technology, that also allows us to continue to look at our technology infrastructure for safety, radios, et cetera, those types of things, and also do that out of the sinking fund. From an infrastructure standpoint, we still have some roofs that we would like to take a look at, and while we did, a variety of doors that connected to the new renovations with the bond issue, we did not do every door in the school district with the bond issue, we'd like to continue to do replacement of doors across the school district. From a site standpoint, again, such a great resource because there are a variety of erosion issues, and, you know, I'm, I'm just so impressed with our properties here in the school district, they're gorgeous and they're rolling and they're huge, but they cause, you know, if you have rolling huge properties, you have erosion and you have water and wetland issues. And so we've been able to utilize the sinking fund, and we would anticipate over the next three years to be able to take care of some erosion issues at Lone Pine and other wetlands issues at some of our schools. And then for our K-12 buildings, again, a variety of things that we can do, or are at our non-K-12 schools, we, we'd like to do a little bit of work over at Bowers, the Nature Center, there are, there are potential renovation and facility work, works that we could do over there that we would be excited to do that. And again, we want to make sure to set some of these dollars aside so when that emergency comes up, just like they have come up, whether it's a water main break or a boiler that goes down, we're in a position to be able to replace it and not impact our general operating budget. So that's what we spent the dollars on, that's what we plan on doing over the next three years, and I would just highlight that the overall millage rate in, in, in this school district ten years ago was ten point nine mils, and what we're looking at, if this renovate, if this renewal passes, even with the two thousand and twenty bond issue included in there, it's only nine point five mils. So with all of that work in the two thousand and twenty bond issue and the continuation of the sinking fund, we're paying less millage today than we were ten years ago in the school district. We looked at the overall millage rates as it relates to bonded debt and sinking funds in Wayne County, even if we pass this, again, we're about three point four mils between our bonded debt and the sinking fund, the average in Wayne County is a little bit over six mils. And so we're still well below the average, and so I think-
Oakland County.
Oakland, did it, what did I say? Did I say Wayne?
I didn't say that.
The Wayne County average is even higher, the Wayne County average is even higher, and Oakland County is six point two, thank you. And so, and so, you know, this type of information is what we want to, you know, we're sharing this today, not with, as much for you, because you guys all know this, you guys worked on this very, very hard last year, but we want the community to understand why are we coming and why are we asking for this, why is this important to our community, why does this still help our kids? And so, and so what we'll be doing is taking these types of facts, and we'll be working on a very, a very robust campaign over the next seven weeks leading up to November seventh, and we'll have activities planned every week that will include everything from utilizing social media, our website, we will create one-page plans, we'll create Q and As, postcards, and we'll try to provide every opportunity that we can to, on a weekly basis, get that word out, whether it's our, whether it's our, you know, school newsletters, whether it's our district newsletters, social media posts, presentations, we're, we're going to be putting together presentations for any community member, group that would like us to come and make presentations, and we certainly want our staff to know that this renewal is up, up for us and why it's important. And so our job right now is to inform, remember, as a, as an entity, we don't, we don't advocate, but what we do is inform. And so the people in this community need to know why you decided to put this on the ballot, and we're going to tell them very clearly, this is why we think this is important for our kids, this is why we're bringing this back to you, a renewal, no increase, sinking fund millage. So this is the kickoff? Again, I'm talking a lot tonight, but-
No, it's great.
That's the background.
One thing I wanted to clarify, it was at the high school bond that, that the sinking fund was reduced from one point five to point seven five, and then had the rollback has brought it to where it is today, so.
That is correct.
You might want to-
I'm not allowed to touch the microphone.
Will you have to speak a little louder? One more time for Todd, your voice is so-
Sir, so when you were talking, you mentioned the two thousand and twenty bond and the sinking fund, but what took place was the sinking fund was one point five mils prior to the high school bond back in two thousand and twelve-ish, and it was cut in half to point seven five mils at that point in time, and it's remained at that level since then, and it shows up as this long decimal because headle rollbacks take place because increased property values, it's a, we'll get into it, but that's why it is point six nine seven six.
Yes, and it's a great point because why the heck would we ask for point six nine seven six mils, right?
Right. Yeah. I just wait till I can hear your voice echo in the back, then that's why I know you're being picked up. But thank you, I want to also thank our community in advance for your support, we, we would like to thank you for your yes vote on November seventh, and so we're looking forward to that. Any other comments from the other board members? All right, moving right along, item number three D, Element, Elementary Support Staff Discussion.
And I'll probably, again, I'll provide the background for this, and I'll allow Keith and Todd to jump in and provide any additional comments that they would like to, but this actually started just as I was coming on this summer, and it was an issue of looking at our larger elementary schools and sort of asking that question, if we have a large elementary school, what additional type of supports do they need to be, be successful in operating the school? And, you know, there's- And, you know, there's no, uh, magic number with this, but I would, I would say based on my experience and again, Todd and Keith, or anybody jump in in regards to experiences that you've had. But my experience is once you get to that plus 550, getting close to 600, you're talking that, about that being a large elementary school. And so initially I think what caught the eye of, uh, of the school district was when it looked at its support staff that it had, uh, specifically for, uh, administrative staff at the elementary compared to if you look at, for example, our middle schools, our middle schools which have, uh, you know, that are about, you know, they're about 600 each, um, would have more, more support uh, on the administrative end than it would be if we were looking at just our regular elementary school. But, you know, when we look at, right now we have one school east over that's, that's quite high. We do have a school that, that would be, uh, similar as it relates to the enrollment. So a variety of questions that came up, uh, were, were raised, uh, related to that. And one question is, well, we're not just talking about administrative staff here. What about all staff in the building in regards to making sure that we're supporting the kids? And so we went back and took a look at, uh, the, the, the following, uh, areas. We looked at the, um, special education staffing at, uh, and we're looking at specifically at Eastover, even though it's not an Eastover issue, it's a large building issue. And so maybe in five years, it's a different building or maybe these numbers look different. But, um, but looking specifically at Eastover compared to the other elementary schools, we looked at the resource room, the social work support. Uh, we looked at also, uh, additional certified staffs such as interventionists, uh, learning specialists, uh, elementary, uh, program coordinators. We looked at the paraprofessional allocations that were provided. And we did note that, um, appropriately so, we had provided some additional staff at Eastover because of the size of the building. Um, that made a lot of sense in these areas. Uh, but where we don't have additional support for the staff right now is with the, uh, with the administration. We just have one principal over there. And so, uh, we thought it made sense based on looking at all of this data, looking at the fact that Eastover's over 600 students now, uh, and the three other elementary schools are at about 500 or a little bit less than 500, uh, that it makes sense that we consider some additional administrative support at the school to take care of all of, of the things that, uh, that a principal would have to take care of, uh, at the school. We've identified a, a specific job description that identifies the types of activities which just aren't administrative activities. But it has to do with how are we supporting kids in the building and what kind of things can we do to support the teachers in the building? Because remember, they've got a significant more number of sections in that school compared to, uh, the other elementary schools. The other thing we looked at with an administrator were two other components. One is by adding an administrative position, what we're, what we're getting is some additional flexibility because we, uh, have a longer school year. They, they work 205 days. Uh, and, uh, they work, you know, it's, it's basically a salaried schedule. They work, they, they work a flexible schedule based on our needs. Uh, and so we know the costs are going to be fixed as it relates to what that, uh, cost for the school district. Actually, if you looked at it on a per day basis, it would actually be a little cheaper for us to utilize this particular option. Keith had a chance to talk to different employee groups about, uh, you know, what makes sense and, and, and how this might fit. And we feel good with, uh, the responses that people have provided, uh, with that. And so we think this is, uh, and the other thing I just would add is, um, when we think about our elementary principals, we think about any administrative position, um, especially principal positions, you know, at the elementary level, unlike the secondary level, there's no, uh, there's no farm system. You know, there isn't a place to go and, and have people come and say, yeah, I want to try to be an administrator. I want to get experience being an administrator. Want to see if this works for me. Um, uh, a lot of times we end up, uh, hiring, uh, if it's a new principal who hasn't had administrative experience, they're coming directly from the, the classroom and haven't had a chance to really experience that. And so it's an opportunity for us to, to build the farm system up a little bit too. And, and, and I think that's a, a side benefit of doing this. We're doing this really to support the kids in the building. But, um, we would identify that as a side benefit. So with that, Keith or Todd, do you want to add anything else?
No, I think you covered it pretty well.
Say something because I want, yeah, I feel like I'm just.
But, um, having that additional support allows the other supports that we have in the building not to, uh, have to pull in to support the main office or allow them to work more in the roles that we put them in because those needs will be there, um, whether we staff another position or not. So it not only is supporting the main office, but also supports a lot of the lead roles and the different supports that we have because they're not drawn into some of those needs as, as frequently. So it will, um, really help Eastover. I really appreciate, uh, Randy and Keith looking at this. We've really done our homework on it and we believe that this is going to be a good move for Eastover.
I, I appreciate the fact that we looked at all of the services that are connected with making sure our students are, um, being provided adequate resources. So I, I do thank you all for looking into those things as well. I think that's important. Uh, to know also that Eastover being over, well over 600 students in the building, so beyond the 550 that you may reference to, I think it's a great idea that you're looking forward to adding additional support services in the space. So thank you for looking into that.
So the next steps for us is we'll actually post the job and ultimately then that administrative, uh, appointment comes to you and we'd have to then adjust that in the budget. So that's the formal component for you guys.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, we are on item number 3E, um, DHS Summer Learning Program. Is this Todd or is this Dr.?
It's going to be Todd and Kimberly. But I'm going to provide, I'm going to provide a little bit of, uh, you know, just, I can't stop myself today. I promise they're going to provide the, the, the content.
Okay.
But again, it's just, I have an opportunity to come in with a different set of eyes, a new set of, of lens.
We love to, we love to hear about your lens.
Yeah, I have a chance to, you know, uh, view things, uh, um, sort of fresh. And I would just, uh, so we are gonna, we are gonna share with you what's been an annual update for the board. And so Todd and Kimberly are gonna, uh, provide a lot of the specifics. Um, just from a big picture standpoint though, I would go back to my own learning as it relates to what, what has our summer program been? And so it helps, I think, to create some context around what's there right now. And so, uh, uh, because I think then that will give us an opportunity down the road to say, well, what do we want in the future? And so the review you're seeing, you're going to hear tonight is really, okay, here's what happened this summer. But just know that we're thinking about, okay, well, what should summer school look like in the future? And I'll describe that just a little bit more in a second. But our current program is basically structured where it's available to anybody in the community. So any family that wants to partake in the summer school program can, uh, participate in that. And it's basically an extended schools experience. This isn't a mandatory, uh, uh, attendance, uh, program. And so attendance can vary as it relates to those that have participated. Uh, it's not a structured, what I would describe as a rigorous targeted program where we're identifying our struggling learners and saying this is going to be the program to catch you up. Uh, that's really not how this has been structured, but it's really structured more as an extended program of the school year for any, any student that is interested in, uh, potentially participating and a real enrichment for them over the summer to try to maintain the learning that they garnered during the year. And so just for a second, just to remind you where the funding comes from, it's actually a combination. COVID started and provided a, a variety of funds related to this. Uh, it was the S3 funds of this past summer that helped to fund this, along with state funds, section 98C, uh, which helped really create sort of the structure that we created based on the guidelines that were provided, uh, through those different, two, those two different grants. But I would just note that next year it's going to be a little bit different because at least as of today, our understanding is 98C is not there. So that state funding component and the regulations that go with the state funding component are not in play for next summer. And, uh, the SRS funds at some point in time are going to run out, right? We know that. And so it probably is a good opportunity for the board to reconsider sort of, you know, what are we doing with summer school? And what are we hoping to get out of this? And how are we best supporting kids with a summer school program? And again, I think that's a conversation that we can have, uh, uh, moving forward, uh, to look at what, what makes the most sense for next year. And so, um, our LST team I know is going to go. They've been, they've, they've been following this funding. They know that this has been something that they would, uh, be tackling. And so they, they're, they're, uh, prepared and ready to and have been already talking about, you know, what summer school options might look like. Um, because it'll probably look a little different next year than it, than it has this year. Um, you know, one specific reason because of this funding. So, um, so with that context, I'm going to turn it over to, to Todd and Kimberly to share some details with you.
Thank you, Dr. Leepa. I'm going to focus on the elementary experience or the K-8 experience and Todd will, uh, talk with us a little bit about the secondary experience in our summer academy. I want to start by recognizing that the success of this work is really, uh, a result of the efforts of our staff. Uh, they've done an outstanding job in bringing learning and maintaining routines to young people in our community this summer. For the families that participated, we're, we're grateful for their commitment to maintaining routines and academic skills over the summer months. We know that that really leads to, uh, the confidence and, um, readiness that students feel when they reenter our buildings, um, in, in September. So we're grateful for those efforts. We, um, met the needs of 230 students this summer. Uh, of those 230 students that were enrolled, 56 of those students had IEPs. Uh, we met with them three days a week, uh, from July 12th through August 10th. And the focus of that time was really around, uh, grade level literacy and math concepts, much like was mentioned. Uh, the goal to, uh, maintain, uh, time with grade level curriculum uh, and to think about a balance between both academics and so the social aspect of group games, physical education, outdoor play, et cetera. In fact, I'll share, uh, a bit of, of feedback that we heard from the families as a part of a survey. And outdoor play and physical education was hands down our children's favorite aspect of the summer academy. In addition to our in-person offerings, we did also offer a K-8 virtual experience. And that was, uh, made available to families that were not enrolled in DHS during the 2223 school year. So for families that were looking for an option, uh, with a little more flexibility in terms of either staying at home or being on vacation and jumping onto a Google Meet, that virtual offering was again, uh, available this summer. And, um, what else do I want to highlight for you? I think that the, um, the feedback that we received from students and staff, uh, for the most part was the appreciation for the flexibility of sort of coming in and out, right? We realized attendance a little less than we have in previous summers this year. Over the period of time, we were at about 60% of enrolled students attending. The last week of summer academy, in that fifth week, we dropped to almost about 35% of enrolled students attending. So folks are managing that, uh, offering alongside vacations and camps and, and other things that fill their summer. And our families also, 35 of them completed a caregiver survey and they, for the in-person academy only. Uh, they appreciated the programming, the timing of the program, uh, 80, almost 80% of parents felt that was positive. 50% of our parents surveyed said that their primary goal was for academic practice and maintaining some routines. About 25% were looking for some academic growth out of that program. And, uh, 68% felt their desired goal had been achieved as a result of participating. Uh, it's been suggested that we consider extending the length of the day, um, increased communication, uh, with summer school staff and perhaps some concluding progress reports. Uh, I know one of the things, um, that we've been interested in as a group is, is how our children come into this program. Uh, we've got, uh, some material that start in early April and, uh, gets distributed in terms of preparing for registration. And then our, uh, family, I'm sorry, our educators have been talking to families at that spring conference time and really trying to hone in, uh, with families, either with a recommendation to attend or some additional detail about what supports might be there, either from, um, our resource room or special education staff, um, some paraprofessionals, some ELD staff and social workers, all also a part of our summer, uh, in-person summer academy. So really trying to round out, um, what's available to support children while they're there, uh, while also creating the flexibility, uh, of a program that is sort of wide open and somewhat general uh, in terms of hitting those grade level curriculum pieces across that time. Uh, did you want to jump in with secondary?
Um, I'm going to just review the secondary model to kind of give you a, a brief overview of what that looks like. And a lot of this, there's two documents in that folder. One of them is simply the course offerings and descriptions for that. And like Kimberly, I'm going to start just simply by thanking staff. Like you remember that first summer coming right out of COVID? This was in response to, uh, being virtual for quite some time and then moving through those hybrid models. And really the true intent immediately after that was to get more in-person time. And that's what this program was, um, developed to offer. And at that time, part of the requirements of funding is K-8 needed to be in person in order for us to receive those grant dollars. But at the secondary level, at high, at the high school level, it, there still was an option to be virtual. And, um, our staff was just amazing. I remember that spring scrambling with staff to create, uh, that coursework. And, um, they were just absolute champions to prepare, to extend that school year, to get kids more in-person time, particularly our youngest children, um, uh, because we wanted that socialization. I remember the first day being at that summer school, that very first summer. And I knew no matter, no matter what else happens in this building, these kids coming together in an academic setting, being able to play with each other, have academic conversations. I knew that was the real intervention that was taking place at that time. At the secondary level, what this looks like is primarily in two different categories. You have credit recovery and credit advancement. Credit recovery is offered for students to stay on track for graduation that may have fallen behind. And, um, we do that largely by enrolling students in E2020, which is a virtual setting. However, big thanks to Jim Fogel and Jean Buford for staffing our model center and our lab. So they're available. Students want to do E2020 with that adult support simultaneously, they can come in or they can wait till they have a question, but it's, it's that in-person lab support that we offer throughout the summer. And they do a wonderful job helping our students. Students are supported with technology and in-person support, like I said, at the model center. And most students complete the courses at home and then tap into that other resource that we have available. Uh, this summer we had 80 students earn credits through E2020. And so that should help keep students on track and move them towards graduation to be, uh, graduating at the same time as their peers. For students who attempted but could not earn credit recovery this summer, we also have another option that happens during the school year. And we, uh, utilize Michigan Virtual Essentials for this. And students can be enrolled in that simultaneously and we'll carve that into their schedule. However, unfortunately, that can't always fit within their schedule. And so we have other means that we can move through that and problem solve around that to make sure that kids are graduating on, on time uh, through some of those offerings. The other format that we have is we refer to this as credit advancement. And this allows students to complete one semester earning credit towards the merit, um, uh, the Michigan merit curriculum, which is required some of those courses. And what that does is it helps free up space on their schedule to take other courses that they want to take during the school year. So oftentimes this might be utilized by students looking for more space on their schedule for performing or visual arts. Perhaps they're pursuing the full IB diploma. Perhaps they want to take an additional AP class or the CTE courses that we offer. Or, um, we also have students kind of pursuing in this area where they're just looking for more flexibility to take an additional business class, whatever it is that they want to create some of that space for. Over the summer, we had 77 students, um, use this option to create that space. And they all earned credit in either one of the following areas that we offer, physical education, health, economics, or US government. The other document that you have in there is a slide deck with different portions of information. And you'll also notice within that, um, that we provide to you that we are struggling a little bit to get reliable data, academic data from the summer program, um, through FastBridge. We weren't very successful doing that. The perception data that Kimberly talked about, we were a little bit more successful. Those are large enough data sets for us to draw some conclusions on. So that's definitely something that we're going to have to rethink the use of FastBridge as that mechanism to collect that data. So we ran into some challenges, but what we can do as we move through the fall, we do have our assessment cycle that is at the beginning of the year. We'll be able to take that registration list that we have, along with the attendance rates that we saw in our summer programming. And we'll be able to align that with the fall assessment cycle and be able to review that. That is going to be important for us to do. As Randy mentioned, um, uh, much of the summer programming that's been built was in response to COVID. And that while there are several, or there were, I should say, there were several state and federal funding sources, those are, those are starting to dissolve on us. So we're going to have to rethink. those are starting to dissolve on us. So we're going to have to rethink what this programming looks like. And we'll be doing that this year, coming back with some type of recommendation. We'll have to work closely with the business office. There's still, I think I just met yesterday a couple of them. So we're going to give them a little bit of time before we jump into this work, or maybe it was a day, a couple of days before I met a couple of them. So there's a lot of things that we're going to have to consider for this upcoming summer. We're going to have to, once we know a little bit more what bond construction is going to look like, this probably could impact the elementary schools a little bit more than the middle schools. This year, almost all the campuses were not in play for us. That's why we primarily were targeting the high school for some of that space. So we'll have an opportunity to look at that together. We'll try to collect a little bit more reliable data that will be sitting in that fall assessment cycle and match that up with our registration list. And I believe that's it. Oh, the other thing, as we move through, just another thing that we're really going to have to consider. You know, we'll want to, we were able with all of this funding to completely offset the costs. Everything that we talked about this evening, elementary, middle, and high school, we were taking care of the costs. So we're really going to want to look at what new grants may be available or other funding sources, or perhaps rework other ones that we were using in other areas to see if we can't continue to offset the costs almost completely for our families that are utilizing this. And so that will be important for us to do, too. We were hitting all the requirements within these funding sources. And sometimes that helps shape exactly what the program looks like so that we, so that when we're applying for those grants or it's being audited, we're able to successfully grab onto those dollars to offer the programming that we have been. But a lot of those were like a two to three recovery COVID dollars. And they are dissolving on us. There is still some available for this upcoming summer, but not quite the same amount. And I'm sorry, I don't have that dollar amount on me right now. I feel like I'd have to text Karen probably or Tina.
For the cost for the...
For the summer programming.
It was 75, it was in the packet, $75 and then 100 and...
Family cost.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, not for family cost. I meant the allowable grant. Yeah, I can't remember the, I can't remember how much is falling out of the grant for that cost compared from this summer to next summer. I can't quite recall that. But we'll take a look at all those options and come back to a recommendation and get your input on that before we finalize any plans.
Are there stipulations in the grant that prevented the virtual from being at no cost to families?
Yeah, in fact, I think we, I think we had to use a different grant source or perhaps a general fund for the virtual programming at the elementary that Kimberly talked about. But we wanted to make sure for families, especially that first year, some families were not ready to come back to school in summer of '21. And so we still wanted to be able to capture those students. So we did offer some virtual programming. But I don't believe we were able to capture a lot of the grant dollars for that. But the bulk of that out of 98C, am I saying the right grant, 98C? I think that's the correct one, that had specific stipulation, especially early on, that it had to be in-person for us to qualify for that. And that was the one where the idea and the premise of that is you're extending the school year that you're in to increase the amount of in-person time to make up for the hybrid and virtual days that we had. So if you did that, I keep asking Kimberly, because I keep forgetting, I don't mean to put you on the spot. So if you've been doing summer in-person consistently, you could have how many half-days by now? I'm sorry, I'm putting her on the spot.
When we go back to the first summer following COVID, we were able to offer 72 hours. And then it's been 37 and a half each summer since, so it's a total of 147 instructional hours or 21 school days.
All right, so we're making up some of those days as we move through the summer programming.
That was fantastic. Thank you, Kimberly.
So Todd, when we offered these courses back in the summer of '21, particularly at the high school, we had a few, I'll turn it, I think it was in one of the backup slides. We had E2020 that you touched on, but there was also Michigan Virtual, and then there were other courses, Todd.
We were covering those costs if, so even if we were using a different provider, we were covering and offsetting those costs for the students, so making sure that they were registered, had the equipment that they needed, and then also staffing our labs and with a couple of our own staff in case students needed any type of tutoring or help specifically for the courses that they were enrolled in.
Got it. So versus 2021, when we had all of those multiple options available, we pretty much standardized on E2020 as kind of our path to students for high school or K-8?
Yeah, it's a pretty successful provider in the state of Michigan. So we'll, at the secondary level, we probably won't do a lot of tweaking. The credit recovery, particularly virtual for high school students, tends to work better. But we still want to provide the opportunity to be in-person for those who are looking for that type of support. And then credit advancement, the credit advancement was popular before COVID. And then the credit recovery helped for students, particularly that weren't ready to come back to school and maybe missed quite a few days, or they were quarantined for quite a bit. So at the high school level, we probably won't do a lot of tweaking other than look for, how could we perhaps expand courses or options and make that available for students? But we're probably pretty close. The K-8 structure probably deserves more tweaking now that is, we're not really going to be in the mode of responding to COVID. So now it's time to start transitioning what that program might look like.
So I just wanted to make sure I understood what you said. So this summer, our students participated in E2020, which was at no cost versus the Michigan Virtual and the summer credit we usually provide? Or were all three options provided this summer?
Michigan Virtual was offered this summer.
Yeah. Depending on where that course might be, we might pull on different ones, depending on how specific that is. Offsetting those courses.
So if a student participated in Michigan Virtual, we paid for that course at the cost that's currently listed in the packet? Is that what I'm hearing you say? Not the student, or is the student paying for this course?
We were offsetting those costs.
And then how many students participated this summer?
Seventy-seven.
I have a couple of questions. So 98C versus ESER, like roughly, what's the split? Do you have any kind of idea? Is it 60-40, 70-30 in terms of overall funding?
We can get that for you. I don't have it, I don't have it memorized, yeah. My recollection was 98C was bigger than ESER's, but I couldn't tell if it was 70-30 or 60-40.
So I mean, just to know, because one goal certainly expired before the other.
Correct. One's already gone.
Correct. So just to know where that lands. And then in some of the slides, we noted that it's about 24%, I think if my math was right, of the students that participated are students that have an IEP. So what's being, I guess, I think I understand it maybe for students that are participating virtually, because I did see some notes in there about specifically mentioned IEP. But if they were just attending the K-8 in person, would there have been IEP considerations for those students?
Yeah, you want to hit that one?
Yep, absolutely. So we had multiple resource room teachers that were present. We had social workers that were present. We had speech therapists that were also present as well. And then we had the addition of paraprofessionals. So most of those students were broke into smaller groups.
Got it. Perfect. Okay. And then, so I guess I have a different thought about a lot of this, you know, because I think the intent was, we all said it, or we all know it, that this was a response to COVID. So it was, how do we allow students to engage in person and just getting people together? And I think it did that obviously very, very well. That's not really the primary goal anymore. So what is the goal? To me, this seems like an opportunity, I'm trying to go back to the slide. There was, you know, a number, I think, 29, almost 30% of the parents said that their goal was for growth. And 50% of the parents said that they wanted academic practice. To me, I kind of put that together. If I'm a parent, like I want them to practice what they're doing, but I also want them to improve. So if that's, if 80% of people are looking at this as a way to help their students academically, I think that becomes the focus of this, is K-8, how do we allow these kids to be better prepared as they're getting back to classrooms? And then in my mind, when I look at like math SAT scores, I start to wonder, is this an opportunity where we have some way to put something in place to allow these kids that are either at risk, struggling, or allowing them to get extra prep help that they would otherwise have to go out and get, you know, private tutoring? Is this an opportunity where we can utilize that? Because if I'm, I don't have a high school student yet, but if that was being offered, I would love for my kids to be able to get that extra help, especially if we're being, you know, sponsored and covered maybe wholly or partially by the district. So that's just a thought is, you know, we talk about, what is the intent of this? It was absolutely one thing. Now it's, to me, should be something completely different. And that kind of should drive where we're putting our dollars and where we're kind of organizing these directives.
Yeah, I think you're right on all those points. And that is sounding very parallel to the type of conversations that we're having and how we might prioritize that and also look at private entities to help do some of that targeted intervention work for us.
Yeah. Okay. And then last point. I think, and you mentioned it, it would be really, really great going forward, especially if we put these resources into place to really see what the payoff is. To go in and whatever we need to do now, I think now is a good time to plan. So when we get to the summer, we've already got those mechanisms to, from an analytics perspective, say, here are these kinds of kids, and drill down, not just, you know, they were first graders, but what school were they from, you know, look at all of the different attributes of these students and then really see as they progress and go through, yeah, this program worked excellent. Or this virtual thing didn't really hit the mark for these kids. And that will, and this could have the ability to make this program really something successful that would allow us to stand out that others just don't offer. So that's it.
To that end, the testing that was done in the summer, I think with the limit of, like, the amount of time that you have in the summer, I think, and knowing that they're going to take the FastBridge test in the fall, and knowing that, now knowing that not very many kids take the test, maybe we just don't do that in the summer. We focus on the learning and then we match up their FastBridge spring to their FastBridge fall. Throw that part out. Just a suggestion.
No, I think you're right. The, you know, in hindsight, I don't believe putting FastBridge in the summer program to try to extract that data. But we are anticipating a desire to be able to look at data very quickly after the summer program. So we went ahead and made the decision to try to collect that. But I think you're right. I don't know that FastBridge needed to be in there. But it was a general assessment that we had that would fit in that. And we felt like it would, you know, without the challenges that we had, we'd be able to look at the data sooner than we are right now, because it's really not available. So we made an attempt at it, but in hindsight, I think you're right. You know, it wasn't, it probably wasn't best placed right there that we could have used the fall assessment cycle to...
Yeah, I mean, more just, I mean, obviously, like, in the summer, it's, you know, it's not, they're not stuck doing it. But also, there's a limited amount of time that they're learning in the summer. So probably, like I said, in retrospect, better use, you know, for instruction. But maybe they wouldn't have been impressed that day anyway, you know, who knows?
I mean, one of the things, one of the reasons you'll want more specific data moving forward is, one of the decisions you'll have to make is, is this resource better than another resource, some other intervention, right?
Right.
And so it's going to be the opportunity to say, I mean, you can't do that without the data. And so we're going to need, you know, we're going to need a larger percentage of those kids participating and understanding how they did.
You could match up their specific data from the spring to the data in the fall, which is taken fairly early, correct?
It's in the first couple months?
Yes.
But I think, but I think you, remember, the spirit of the program is academic. One thing, and I don't know if you have data on this as to why a lot of students didn't take the test, was that a parental choice, you know, for them not to take the test? Because one thing you want to avoid, right? We want to use our resources wisely. And we want to make sure it's there for academic growth. It's not there as a so-called summer camp. I'm just saying, right? So, you know, I mean, it's great that students enjoyed being outdoors and running around, but it is academic growth. Keep that in mind. That's the spirit of it. It's not a, you know, an alternative to like a summer camp.
Yeah, it was attendance on the day that the assessment was offered. And then also, we weren't anticipating some of the tech challenges that were at play, because students had started to be rolled over into the system, so their logins were no longer... We just weren't anticipating that, because we don't usually pay attention to some of those tech rollovers or student information rollover systems that happen during the summer, because we're not trying to embed some of those pieces. So I think the challenges were just sitting in front of us that didn't allow us to get a better data set on, with what we're looking at today. But you're right, we do have a assessment cycle this fall. And we'll be able to try to link that up the best we can, along with the attendance, frequency of attendance, if we have that information, to try to come up with some type of review that we can do before we start making decisions on what to do in the future.
Was there a good cluster of students from across the district? Or was it more polarizing for participation from one area versus the other?
Fairly even spread. We know that we do get a lot of requests for transportation to the summer academy, and that has been cost prohibitive in years past. And so that'll be a challenge that we face when we want to become really targeted with who needs the service. We need to make sure that getting to the service is not a barrier. So that's a conversation we're also having. We have the data in terms of the percentage of participation, both by grade level and school. We can share that with you for sure.
Because that would be my only thing is, as we're looking to, you know, expand and grow the program, to make sure we're also making access, not just, it's there, can you get, can you actually, you know, get to the service? So that's something I want us to also consider about. Maybe there's a grant for transport, some grants that may...
We really wanted to be able to provide transportation. Yeah, we made an attempt for that. We really did want to be able to eliminate that barrier and provide more access by having transportation. And then it just proved to be very cost prohibitive to be able to do that. But we did make an attempt to try to secure some funding for that.
It's not only cost prohibitive, but you're talking maybe one student from this neighborhood and another one from over here. The time on bus would be very long in the summer, because you have, your route is not a small condensed route. You're now looking at, like, pick on Lone Pine. Instead of eight buses that would go and pick up kids from A Pine, you're now having one bus that's running all eight of those routes, picking up students. So it ends up being a very, could end up being a very lengthy route, too.
Well, I would hope, I mean, I guess I'm not...
We'll definitely look at it again, though. It's definitely something we'll review.
Being inventive, if you can get to the elementary school, maybe a location that's more centralized for folks to maybe get to. Maybe thinking about adding in some options until we can get to that point where it's additional access. So if you're making three stops as opposed to 60 stops, could be a possibility. Just an option. Anything else?
So Keith, how are our staff compensated for participating in summer sessions? Is it defined in the union contract or is it outside of the contract?
A little bit of both. Well, it was defined in the contract, but we kind of went outside of that. It's challenging to find staff that want to work during the summer. So I think we've done, you know, Kimberly, Todd, and Sarah have done a really nice job being able to staff our summer programming. And we worked with Phil two years ago, 20, maybe summer 2020.
I think both of those are right, a few times.
And we've identified, we really dove into each program, because it's not, this dollar amount covers all the different programming. We looked at how many hours, the amount of planning time, what was involved in each program, because they were a little bit different, you know? Monitoring a virtual program that may take four hours of your time over the summer is different than, you know, in-person, face-to-face options. So we have a skill range. in-person, face-to-face options. So we have a skill range based on what that is and it's a stipend amount.
Yeah, Phil and the DHA have been great to work with on, on this particular issue and we were able to help problem solve that together. I guess maybe it could be best described similar to like a stipend?
Yeah.
That, that somebody might get for coaching or for doing a co-curricular. That's probably maybe the, the best description of, of how staff get compensated for it.
And then our hourly staff would, would remain at their hourly rate.
Tark's point is going to be a huge differentiator for the district, right? But do other districts offer similar programs over the summer?
It's, it's all over the board. So you're going to see some that are, that are, you see a lot of hybrids. So it would be a combination of, of what we've done here with a more targeted identified group. Even when you target students, that doesn't mean they are going to come in the summer. We know when we have them during school year, we know that they're going to be here and we're going to be able to provide those interventions. Summer, they still, it's still an option and sometimes a challenge to get the students that we would identify as needing the most. But that's what I would say. I would say it's a combination of something similar that what we've done. And again, the funding has been, you know, everybody's doing the same funding. So they've had some of those same constraints. And that, but, but some places have also tied into that. And sometimes these, like I said, that's what we'll have to look at because these are title funds. They might use their thirty-one A funds. And there are some districts that get a lot more title funds, thirty-one A funds than we get. And so they are the districts that I've seen that have had more of a targeted summer program. Doesn't mean that we can't or shouldn't. It just means that they've got different resources to do.
And that answer probably looked different five years ago.
What, what, what does this typically cost to run the program?
For some reason, I'm thinking like two hundred and fifty thousand. Is that?
I would say, trying to think of a quick math in my head, I would say at least two hundred and fifty five.
With some program? And Sivit, to answer your question, I know I've spoken to board members at West Bromfield, for example. Yeah, most districts have it and in some other, it's whether how much targeted, other districts, like I know West Bromfield does probably a lot targeted search, you know, to go out, you know, and target people that really need it in academic growth and try best they can with resources to make sure they have the resources to get there as well.
Might be a great conversation to have. Might be a good conversation to have.
It is. And Tark brings up a good point about not just SAT prep and maybe we want to consider for the high school, college, like college essay writing prep, you know, things like that, the whole gamut where, right? You look at a district like Oz and I'm not going to, I don't know what the percentage is of people that spend a lot of money, you know, for that. And if we could offer that for those that don't have the wherewithal, that, that would be a, a good use of funds.
That's a really good point.
To build on that, can we make it an intervention with some teasers or incentives of some sort? Then it, the intervention gets easier or participation for intervention gets easier if you're offering such an attempt, right? Helping with essay writing.
The, the biggest problem, right, is getting, is getting there, right? So that, you know, I don't know if, I don't know if it's a school bus or if there's a discounted transportation, right? You know, a van or whatever, you know, that's, that's the challenge, right? The biggest challenge is not targeting, right? You have people, but how are, if you have two parents, where, how are you going to get them there, right? So during the summertime. And that's, that's the biggest challenge. So.
We're going to offer Uber promo codes.
For the elementary kids.
Maybe I'll drive our yellow bus around.
I, I saw you, I heard you did a few years ago.
Few years ago, no, no, a few years ago, I drove a yellow bus in the parking lot in a circle.
Only the parking lot.
In a circle. You don't want me on the road in the yellow bus.
I'm so happy that was clarified.
Weren't you burning some rubber, you know?
I know. They, they, they had, it was like, I think it's enough. PK, you need to get off the bus now.
Anything else?
Anyway, that's a good transition.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. So you, Dr. Leepa. Moving on to item F for policy update first reading. I know this will be.
Yeah.
Well, Keith and.
Yeah, I know Rebecca did a great job of just trying to summarize the stuff.
Honestly, I don't even, based on Rebecca's job, which she gave us a cheat sheet, I don't know if Keith needs to do anything. She gave us a sign.
Paul, you would not believe how many times during the day we say that. Rebecca did the work and Keith doesn't have to do anything. I mean, you want to say how many times it happens.
I like the talent saying this is what changed, you know, it made it, it made it, you know, PK proof. So.
That's tough to do.
So I know Carolyn's not here tonight. I know she chairs your, your policy committee or she may actually be your policy committee. Just a little refresher for you all.
Carolyn, John and.
Miller Johnson, you've contracted with them.
Make it different. No.
You've contracted with Miller Johnson to provide you with your board policy as well as your administrative regs. You vote on board policy, not on administrative regs. We get updates once, twice, maybe three times a year depending on the year. And a lot of times those updates are based on what they're seeing across the state. Whether it's questions coming from clients that are similar questions, changes in laws. It could just be requests from a particular client that, you know, they come across. This may be something they could use a little clarification and they'll do those updates. And that's what you have in front of you today. Some of them, like the opioid antagonist that's been in, it was out, now we're going back in. There's actually law or a bill pending right now. This, it's a brand new one. So it came out actually after this language, but this language, I believe, will match what's current in that bill. If it doesn't, if that changes at all, we would go back and reflect that in the future. Rebecca has provided you with a Google Doc so that if you have questions on particular policies, we can get those answered for you. If I don't know the answer, then I can reach out to Kevin or his policy team. We can get a response for you on that. Generally, we like to try to adopt the language as it's written. It's written for one, for a particular reason. Two, in that we're provided with the service. So if we change that language, then that language is different for us than it is for all their other policy users. So in the future, it's harder for us to track any of those changes down there.
You may know this question is one, this is really quick. What, what, what number of days makes a person homebound or is it based on circumstance?
John wouldn't know the answer to that one. I mean, I know it, but I want to see if John knows it too.
Write it down.
That's right. Rebecca has the answer. I'll see if she knows it.
John, it's you.
So there's a rule called homebound hospitalized. And so the services look a little different. But they both fall under the same category. And so basically a student can qualify for homebound hospitalized if they are unable to attend school for any longer than five consecutive days in a row. And then the school has an obligation at that point to implement services to be able to support that student within their home. The rules look different for special ed than they are for gen ed, but the law itself speaks to the same. So any student that's out for longer than five consecutive days technically falls under that homebound hospitalized rule.
Thank you. That would just change what my question would be to the Google Doc. Thank you so much for that.
Any other questions? All right. So tonight is what we're calling the first reading. We would then go through a second reading as well. My suggestion would be to do a second reading at a, another study session and then take it to the final vote for the, the following board meeting after that. So if we want to target the study session of October as your second meeting and then the October board meeting then would be your voting to approve the policies.
And what's going to be the, I mentioned that there's a meeting with Carolyn, our chair for this. What would be the purpose of that?
I think they'll be canceling that meeting unless you have a number of questions that populate that Google Doc. It was just for her and I to have a touch base if there was anything that came up tonight in discussion. So that I can fill her in on what that discussion was, as well if there was any particular questions that we would then go back to the policy section of Miller Johnson and get the clarifications.
And is there a timeframe you would like for us to have the Google Doc information entered?
You need to give Miller Johnson at least two weeks probably to get back to us, depending on how many questions we have. But you'll see in the file, there's, it says two dash board member policy questions. So it's real easy to look through and then you just populate your questions there. He would get this, this version and he would be able to respond right into this document. So following Keith's proposal, I guess it depends on what the board decides they want to do as far as our next steps. That would kind of, we've got to work backwards.
So ideally, we would have any modifications by the next, our September meeting, which would allow two weeks to pass till the
Yes.
October study sessions. You have that, a second reading, including those suggested modifications.
Is, and I read it and maybe I'll just ask my question, you know, in, in the email that Rebecca provided. Is, is fifteen sixteen supposed to address the issue of people being vetted? Because I don't read that in the red. Like that was one of the, I, I'm assuming that was the reason why Carolyn, we set this up and I read fifteen sixteen school visitors and it doesn't.
That will be, that will be a policy. And then what we've engaged with John Clark for will be to write the AR that will be associated with that policy. That's where your, your nuts and votes are.
That was the confusion last meeting about this being broken out and Carolyn working on this. This is separate.
They're two separate items.
These are the policies. What Gia Marco is working on for us is modifications that we, the prompt was modifications, subject all related to guest speakers, people entering our buildings. So that remains ongoing and is totally separate from this.
So it's going to be under one, it's going to be a regulation under one of these policies somewhere?
No, no, it's going to be, it's going to be an administrative.
It could be an administrative brag. It can sit as a, a, just a process that we have internally. There's a number of ways that we could sit that underneath that policy.
Which does not require board vote, but our committee would certainly come back to the whole board to discuss. But it just doesn't, it means it doesn't require this timeline.
Yeah, it's going to run independently.
Yes.
All right. So everyone can have their updates to Rebecca by September twenty eighth and the Google Doc.
Actually, you know what? I think let's, I know board members like to do the work on the weekends too. So how about I plan to turn everything over to Kevin on October second, which is the Monday.
It works. Thanks.
Thank you, Rebecca.
If you have questions in the meantime, you've ordered Rochelle to me too. I can try to answer those for you.
That means we'll get another reminder at the board meeting, I'm sure.
We might get a reminder.
Thanks, Rebecca. All right.
Thanks, Keith.
Okay. Board goals update. Moving on to item number three G. Board of Education Goals Review and Discussion. I will turn it over to Chair Megan. The committee is Megan, John and myself.
I do. You know, I, I really don't know where to even begin with this. This is like, just seems like something that requires an immense amount of time.
Where we, if we've gotten anywhere with any of them. I think we've accomplished at least one. Definitely.
Which one do you think that we've accomplished?
The one that includes reading our budget.
Oh, right. Yes, our infrastructure goal is definitely that.
I, specific to the infrastructure, board decided or has got a, a first attempt at a strategic ten-year plan from the school or district, right? So essentially that's been deferred till a lot of the bond work has been completed. And we have a full understanding of what our capital needs are. So, so that work will probably get done probably later this fall is what I'm thinking. So it was definitely not done in May. But we have, as a subcommittee and a board, agreed that we're going to keep this thing on Miller Johnson. So that was part, in terms of accomplishment, I'd say we've done a partial accomplishments. It, it's definitely not May. Maybe it should be December of twenty twenty.
You've accomplished it because it said we will review. It didn't say it will be final.
Fair enough. Yeah, we did review it. And decided it would be best served after the bond was completed, but the first step would come after this first phase or phase one of the bond was completed. And I think that the district team working on that between Jake and Keith and.
Under your, and I do appreciate all the work that the three of you have been doing in, in collaboration with the district. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think the infrastructure goal, that committee, Tark's going to, you know, comment on, he's worked on something. I added it from a community perspective. So I think we're going to talk about that. So I think we're, I think we're headed in the right direction in terms of accomplishing our goals. Tark, that may be a good segue for the.
Can I?
Well, let's say on the, if I.
I, I just want to, I want to comment on our student achievement goal. Sarah last spring did provide us with what we requested here. So we are, the idea behind that was for us to all drill down and do our work so that when it comes to setting the goals for next year, we're working with a stronger knowledge base. So we are, I, I think halfway there in that what we've asked of the staff to provide us in that regard has been done. How much any of us can say that we're proficient in that? I know I personally cannot yet. That's going to require a little bit of work on my own, honestly. But I think it's something we should all be mindful of and continue to look at. So that when we come to setting our, our goals for our superintendent for twenty twenty-four, there's not the confusion there that there was last time. That's all I have to say on that one. So I think we're on track there. And then with regard to the DEI goal, which we had set a date of June of twenty twenty-three, we're past that, obviously. We had acknowledged at the time that we were, at that time as a board, extremely consumed by a superintendent search and all those activities. So I think we can give ourselves a pass on the tardiness there, but it is still something that I think we need to address. I would suggest that the subcommittee meet with Dr. Leapaw and anyone else on his staff that he thinks would be best for that, to try and talk through what does that sort of look like internally right now with the district? And just have conversations about that. Is anyone opposed to that idea? And that committee, Michelle, you have a list of.
For the, for the committee for.
For the goals.
The goals are just me and John.
Oh, okay. Got it. Okay.
So I have a question on student achievement and the board setting goals. To your point, Megan, Sarah had shared information with us. Should we add that as a discussion item to a future study session?
To ask clarifying questions or?
Correct. Well, we drilled in, you went, you were presented with like half the equation, right? What, what was, trying to recall what was.
Remember, that's what.
We might need a refresher in November.
A refresher wouldn't hurt.
Was it just math?
I believe you had math and ELA.
Math and ELA.
And both Kimberly and Sarah and Todd presented you with a, a whole suite of this is what we do, K
Right.
twelve and right for those areas and talked about the assessments and the program that we have. You'll have regular updates throughout the year too, with my tip, that will require us to come to you with a, a presentation of the student achievement. So that may be an appropriate time here to refresher and then get into the data like we have in the past.
But my point is, what's our timeline for setting the goals, right? I mean, it works backwards from that to make sure we're reviewing, you know, the materials that are shared with us and understanding what goals to set for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, and that's, this is all tied to us not setting our, our next year's board goals, but our superintendent goals.
Right.
Which now is going to be skewed potentially.
Yeah, we'd say we'd set them in January.
It's a good opportunity to put them where they should be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is to tie them to a school year rather than a calendar year.
Right. I agree.
So I kind of look at it as a blessing in disguise, to be honest.
Dr. Leapaw, do you have any opinion on that? The idea of having a superintendent goal tied to a calendar versus a school year, what you've seen, what you think works best?
Well, I've seen it both ways because I've seen superintendents evaluated on a calendar year and on a, on a, on a school year. I, I, I prefer school year, but that was, that's a personal preference. So. a personal preference. So because, you know, that's the cycle, you know, you're you're finishing it up, you're evaluating how the year went, and you're planning for the next year.
It's always seemed most logical to us, but we've had previous discussions where some commentary was that it should be related to the contract. I think that's something that's always a moving target. The calendar year is always the same. So.
Yeah, I would I would.
And you're the board of education, so you're gonna change it.
The history the history of why a calendar year that it should is obviously when boards turn over, which they turn over every two years, they turn over at the beginning of a calendar. So I mean, I'm not saying that's right, wrong, indifferent.
So one of the reasons I think that's a.
A good point to change it.
Yes, is that we came in as brand new board members.
Welcome to our team.
And we're asked to, I mean, a six month runway to prepare for that probably would have been.
I'm not saying I'm just giving the history as to the why, you know, as to why sometimes it's calendar year. I agree, and I think I'm.
Bucket for a reason why not.
One of the things about the student achievement that we what we wanted to do was put it in the strategic plan and that be the strategic plan be a part of an ongoing superintendent goal to follow this, you know, so I think we're still trying to get to that. And I think, you know, as board members, current board members would like to get to some point where we have the a strategic plan that encompasses student achievement, I think.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, because you don't want to have these goals and these goals and these goals. They should be interrelated. Yeah, and I would offer just as as an idea that that you ask the staff through the superintendent to sort of start with some draft goals for again, I'm only experienced, I'm talking from my experience. I like to provide the board with draft goals from our eyes to say, yeah, we know what the big issues are for next year from from where we sit. And we'd actually would say, here are here are five or six potential goals that we see because we see these as something we really want to focus on next year.
To help the board with the board goals.
Yeah, well, because it ties into superintendent goals. So I think there's there's, you know, as opposed now, the board may want to have separate goals for their own learning, et cetera. That's, you know, as I would read some of this, that would make sense. But but having some some, you know, the big ones are, okay, well, what do we really want to accomplish next year? And how does it fit, John, right into the strategic plan? I mean, so superintendent comes up and says, well, these are six things that are big deals for us next year. And you're like, what? Does that even fit in our strategic plan, right? You want to make sure that they're aligned. And it allows you and again, my experience was because I suggested them didn't mean they were going to be the goals.
Sure, but it's helpful.
We were going to talk to the board and say, here's where we see from our eyes. What do you see from your eyes?
It's almost like a district goal or goals and a superintendent's. The district goals are the ones we all get behind.
And how would they survey the the staff typically for something like that?
Yeah, well, I think that's a little bit potentially a little bit bigger process. And again, I'm speaking from my own experience and plus in my in my side job when I was actually part time, this was the work I was doing. I was doing strategic planning for school districts. And so it was really saying, okay, it ties into that bigger picture strategic plan and your the feedback to build that strategic plan, which you guys did, by the way, in two thousand eighteen, from what I can tell. You went out and you talked to the community and you had a lot of conversation with staff and said, yes, you know. And so you have a process set up in place where you take that feedback and you're able to find the major themes that are coming up to help to say, well, from a strategic plan, here are the things that are important in these different areas. And then from there, then the staff comes, well, here are some here are some potential goal areas. But the board looks at it. Here's some potential goal areas based on this. But it's it's coming from a place of this is what the staff, the community, everybody has told us are important for the organization.
Okay.
I want to offer one more point just to consider. You're talking the difference between doing a superintendent evaluation on a calendar year and a school year. When you're utilizing student data, state data, you don't have it within the school year. So if you do a school year evaluation, when you hit June, you had just tested, you're not getting that data until October, right? Is that timeframe?
It gets released around around this time.
November is the report, right? We normally get an update in November.
So.
We're starting to get data in July, but it's not fully released or fully complete.
Right. So you're after the fact that you're getting that student data. So it's harder to input student data in a school year because you're always going to have.
You're like you have like a lag year.
Okay. So many deep holes.
Yep.
Fuck up points. All right.
So back to that, sorry, back to that question. Should we look at student achievement for a future study session as a discussion topic?
What like I guess my question would be what specifically?
I know it's it's it could be so broad.
When you say student achievement.
So can we look at the goals we set for last year, right, or of this?
So you're talking about the old superintendent goal.
Right, and and.
To ensure an improvement.
To ensure that it's aligned to what we planned to do for next year, or if we're gonna tear it up and start all over again, or if you're just incrementally raising the bar. I think it's worth discussing.
I think this is one of the most, the biggest values you can give our board during your time with us, given your history and your experience and expertise in this. And so I appreciate that you're being kind to say, this is just my experience. We we want to know about your experience. It's valuable to us. So for me, I think for this committee, this subcommittee to be able to meet with you and talk through some of this and help us map this out will be a very highest and best use of our time with you.
Yeah, because when you have the structure in place, then the pieces fall in.
Yes.
And there's certainly going to be student achievement data pieces that will fall into that.
So if we could meet with you somehow, so let's say somehow between, you know, in the next six weeks or so and have some.
You tell me when coordinate and help us map this out. I think that would be very helpful. We'll set up a time.
But to this point, I mean, when you meet, I mean, take the I mean, yes, they're not they're not our current interim superintendent goals, but look at the goals that we all put together with our previous superintendent. And again, we just want to make sure at least those, we obviously spent time working on them. Let's go through and see kind of where we are and how we can, you know, and how they are measurable. Not that we're evaluating a superintendent on it, but that's like the district goals as well. So.
Right.
I would use those. I wouldn't I wouldn't rip them off.
Yeah, it's not the intent, right? But we want to make sure it is still aligned.
Let's put some more framework around them.
Correct, yes.
Exactly, yeah.
And let's reevaluate the timing too of the superintendent goal discussion.
Yeah. And at some point in time, you may want to look at your process and garner some additional community feedback because it's been a while since you did that. And you did before COVID.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, this is going to bring up the topic of the strategic plan, right? I think it was twenty eighteen.
Yeah, twenty eighteen.
Five years later now.
Yeah.
It needs at least a review, certainly. So I mean, as as much as this is like a goal setting thing, like it's really going to lead into a bigger.
Two thousand eighteen is like twenty years ago with what COVID did to our world.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, we're so.
It's like we're at least a decade behind.
If we have a hierarchy of these high level strategies, which I think was done fabulously when it was done, and it coalesces down to these other layers, but if the top layer is like already relevant at this point, I think right now it's good to have some of this. Let's get these goals we've already got and see them through.
Or has it changed, right?
We do need to go back and I'm not trying to put myself into some more work here, but it needs to get done at some point.
I just added you to that committee.
The committee is Megan, Michelle, and John, right?
And then the the Strategic Planning Committee so far is.
What was that?
The Strategic Planning Committee so far is Tarek.
One man show. I didn't use my hand.
Did you and Paul still want to chat or?
I mean, all we need to say about the community partnership committee is that we sent out a draft of kind of two things, the goals for the committee, and then the application. In the past, we talked about wanting to get the application out to the community in the fall time, which is now. So we really want to get that out. So I, you know, we'd appreciate everybody taking a look at it, giving feedback. The intent of this, it kind of does go right into that number four goal, which is how do we make sure we're communicating with the community at large? How are we engaging with them? Board meetings are not the place to do it. Board meetings are where people get three minutes to talk about something, which is still important, but we don't have time for dialogue. We don't have time to talk as a larger group. Emails are not the place to do it either. We don't get a chance to really, you know, it just doesn't work. We want a chance to collaborate. And I think this will give us that opportunity. So take a look at that when you can, give feedback. Ideally, if we could have some agreeance by the next this, you know, September twenty eighth, that yes, this works, we would then work with probably Karen, I guess. And I don't know who will, I don't know whoever else gets involved, but getting that on the website, getting communication out to the community, and then accepting applications, going through that, and formally establishing a committee up with key information meetings and all that. So that's where we're at now, is just need to give feedback and get it going for the board meeting. Obviously, we want to hit this timeline for December of this year, which was part of that fourth goal. So we definitely want to have it established by then.
I would offer as an observation too, that you may want to inventory the types of things that are currently ongoing, because sometimes we lose those pieces in in the in the work because we're always thinking about the next thing that we want to do. So again, as an observation, when I participated in the high school principal search and what I saw from the process that you used as you were leading up to the superintendent search, there was a significant amount of community involvement in that. You'd want to credit yourself for that. You'd want to have this inventory list to say, yeah, here are here are here are seven things we're doing already that really tie into what the what the goal of the committee is. And then that group, when they come together, you know, sort of concurrently, when they come together, one of the things you'd want to say is, well, here are the things that we're doing already. Because, you know, a lot of times people say, well, we need to do five more things. Do we need to do five different things? You know, give them a chance to sort of evaluate what we have been doing, which is, you know, we can always be better, but it's quite a bit.
Yeah, sure. So on that, that's one aspect. One, I just thought about other other districts have done it, you know, whether it's successful or not. Do we want to have town hall meetings with board members? Other districts do it. Birmingham does it. West Bloomfield does it. I know Rochester does it.
We've got to have a purpose for it, right? Like, I don't want.
Well, I mean, no, I'm not saying just sit, but I mean, right now, if we can look at the messages, right, the biggest thing right now is, you know, the opening, you know, right, the new school, you know, what are our feedback and then make sure it's structured in a way, you know, you know, so make sure it's structured in a way, you know, whether it's blue cards, whatever, we can we can talk about it, you know, to kind of hear their feedback for all the new. We've heard a lot, you know, some safety concern, you know, right, we've heard, you know, we've seen some of the emails. Do we want to have a town hall to get all that and listen, just get all the feedback? So we are listening as opposed to we have people that want to write emails, people that don't want to write emails. I'm just saying, we could throw it out there, do it, not do it. Other districts do it.
Some options. Great options. All right. Were you about to say something, John? Right here? Are you all are you good?
Okay.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Great closure. Great way to close this. You are the segue to every conversation I've noticed. You've made the last comment. Thank you for that. You can have the closing statement in the next one as well.
Can I can I say we adjourned the meeting? Is that?
No, don't ask that too loud. Moving on to H, which are our board committee liaison and representative reports. And so we have two for today. Our first one is Connet. So trustee Fella.
Yeah, I was at the Connet PTO meeting this week, visited with them, had a lot of people in attendance. It was pretty amazing to see. So, you know, they do a great job of getting word out to people, getting them involved. There's a lot of things going on. They're doing fun run. So a way for the school to generate substantial funding for things they want to do there. The kids are going to go out, they basically raise money, and then they do some really fun things with like, we take these white shirts and they go to running. And at the end, they get like splattered with color at the end. So it's pretty exciting for them. So they're doing that. We talked about, you know, the opening of school. Connet is one of those places where the parking and the flow of traffic has always been an issue. So there were some things brought up there about, you know, what they could do to keep things moving better potentially. So it was overall a great discussion. They had a lot of really exciting things happening there.
Thank you. Student liaison update. Did you want to? Yes. I think you just wanted to announce the meeting. Go ahead.
On the twenty eighth?
Yeah, yeah, okay. I was wasn't sure what, you know, I mean, there's a couple to draw on. So, yeah, so on the twentieth, we're going to kick off our student board intern program with a meeting prior to this meeting, kind of go through and map out sort of goals for the year from their perspective, our perspective. And then from there, we'll, you know, come back to the board after that meeting and present, you know, what we discussed in that meeting prior to the meeting on the twenty eighth.
And then the bond oversight, you listed.
So John Van Gemmer, Paul Coler, and I have been continuing to meet with the facilities team at the district, Jake, Keith, Randy, Glenn Moran. We're doing progress on all of the construction. What we see is essentially already published on our district website to the community. So urge the community to look on the website, look search for twenty twenty bond. They will get to see all the progress on each of our six facilities, which had significant updates. I think right now IT is is the last piece of that, which is coming together for the next few weeks. The the facilities team is already doing walkarounds at all our facilities to identify what areas remain for further improvement. And they will be coming back to the bond oversight committee and and that will get reviewed and and shared with the with the board in the coming weeks. So that's pretty much all we have to report.
Okay. Anything else? Moving on to three I. Let's look at our our regular meeting agenda framework. Paul, you did you want, is this what you would like for us to add? The conversation about the community partnerships to this particular agenda, the twenty eighth?
Are you talking about what I just brought up? We should have a town hall?
No. Tarek's point is that.
Yeah, it's a board meeting.
Well, he said that that's.
To present to the community. Yeah, that's fine.
Or do you want it at the study session? You want to have that conversation at the board meeting?
That's what I'm saying. So we're looking at, yeah. So are we going through right now the twenty? Are we going through the framework on the twenty eighth?
We are. Yes.
So the twenty eighth is a board meeting.
That's correct.
So we've just, I mean, we just, yeah, it would be, I guess, presenting to the community if we're okay as a board that we're going to send out the application at that point. That's what we would, that went to, right, you know, so it's presenting to the community. This was in theory to discuss it. I guess we've discussed it. And then the twenty eight, either this this is what this is what I envisioned, either the twenty eighth would be a present presenting to the community, or do we need another study session to go through it in detail at the following study at the following study session? Then it goes out the end of October. That's a decision for this board. So right now.
Did you send us an email or something? We were supposed to.
It's in it's in the packet under the previous one, under community updates, the application and the goals, sort of the high level, Tarek shared it. So in the packet, liaison updates is is basically sort of what the application would look like and sort of what the goals of the committee. So that's why I thought maybe we were going to discuss it now. But if we're not ready to discuss it now, we could punt it until the October study session gives everyone here a month to go through it, comment, go back and forth. And then at the end of October is when we would release the application.
I just wanted to make sure before we went through the agenda that we did not forget about that this Tarek brought it up.
Yeah, no, I just, and again, we could discuss it right now, not the application itself, because yes, earlier today, which was not enough time, is when we put it in there. So so earlier today, so it wasn't yesterday, earlier today, it was put in the folder. So let's let's do this. Let's give everyone a month. And now on the October twelfth study session. And then on the October 12th study session, we will discuss and finalize. And why don't we make it a one-way communication to Tarek? Any comments or questions you have on that?
Yeah, okay.
All right?
Perfect.
Fair enough?
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I was not up to speed on that.
And I think on the October 12th, I know I brought it here as granted, it was a great transition to the next meeting. So we can talk about whether or not we want to have, you know, add a study session on the 12th, not to jump ahead, want to have a town hall and structure it to get feedback on the new buildings.
Okay. Think about that.
What was the committee called to consult?
It's the community.
Community.
Partnership.
Partnerships, thank you.
Community partnership committee.
CPC.
CPC for short.
I just think the timing of that would be compared to what still needs to be done.
All right.
I don't, anyway.
All right, so let's look at the agenda. So, um, thank you Rebecca. The, the agenda for September 28th, number one seems to be in order. Point two is special recognition. Paul Colen, board interns, are we keeping that on the agenda? 2A.
It's the group photo and things like that.
Okay, so that's what, when we say speci- special recognition, group photo, because yeah, I wanted to, as part of that, like immediately after the meeting, give feedback to the rest of the board and the community. And maybe we won't be ready and I could punt it, you know, kind of outline the goals, things that we talked about. But thinking about that, I'll put that on the October 12th meeting because it's right after the meeting on the 28th. So yeah, they'll come, we'll recognize them, I agree. And then, you know, so I'll punt that to the following meeting on the 12th, more so a discussion about the goals, what we want to accomplish with the student boards and interns. So that'll be two weeks after.
And then so we'll have the students present?
Yeah.
It's a formal introduction on camera, not everyone could come to the last time and it's just a formal photo of everybody.
We're so excited. Yes, okay. And then celebration of our college board national recognition program. Will the high school be ready for this? The high school will be ready?
Yep, we're all set with this one.
Perfect. Moving on to, we'll have an update, so four is good, four as we know. Five.
I like to say.
Say, or we're not.
Oh, no, I was, um, so we're, all right.
Three is public comment.
Yeah, we're at the superintendent report.
Yep. Four, superintendent report, we're good. We'll have a search update, so that's also fine. Let's go through the consent agenda, any questions on the items listed under the.
What is H? Request to approve resolution of authorization. Hopeful Hill Schools DNR trust fund grant application.
This is where the.
Land purchase at Nature Center.
Yeah. Should we move that? I mean, it's, I'm not saying we're not going to, you know, I'm not saying we're not going to vote on it. Should we move it since it's. It's a land purchase, right? Should we move that to board business first consent? Is there a, is there a, a money amount that the board, that the district is putting in to it?
I, we're going to have to reach out more with Alan to ask the details on this, but to my understanding, with the grant and the cost of the land, I wasn't, at one time there was a dollar amount coming out and then now I'm not sure where he's at on that. So we'll probably reach out to Alan, get some clarification.
We went, and it is, not saying it's not going to, I'm just saying that stuff like that should not be consent, right? That should be board business.
Yes, please, Michael.
275 is Johnson, 40,000 BS. That's the, that's what the resolution says.
So we're going to move H?
Sorry, was it in the consent agenda because it was below the amount we discussed at a earlier board meeting?
I just honestly just put it in there, but we can move it.
No, I'm not, yeah, I'm sure there's no, I mean, and then G.
Wait, go slower, Paul.
I'm sorry.
So we're moving six H to board business.
Six H to board business and then G, what, what amendment are we making to the, I mean, the recreation master plan? I mean, that, that's a big deal, but what amendment are we making? Is it from that board meeting where people came? It was a.
Yeah, it, it, it should not be in the consent, you know, it probably does belong to board business.
So, I mean, I can speak to this one a little bit because I talked to Alan today, if that's okay? Okay. So basically, this is a request by, by them because we need to add some additional language in there. It's really adopting a broader resolution as defined by the DNR for approval of the recreation master plans. So there's a new resolution that Alan provided me late today that I can route to the full board. So that will be part of the packet, but it's, it's not like super material from what you already approved, but there are particular about it, so we are just going to comply.
Which is, which is fine. If we want to leave G in, if it's, if it's not material, that's fine. We could always decide a later date to move it out. All right, so G stays in and, and H, and H moves out, especially if there's a dollar amount associated with it.
Are you good with that, Seba?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else under the consent agenda and question? Moving on to item seven, special report. Paul Wells will be present. Yes, awesome.
Do we know, so right, the bond program construction summer 28th? So, and I know, and maybe Randy knows and maybe Keith knows. So what is he exactly going to be presenting?
This is the update on where we're at, contingency and a summary of all the change orders over the summer. So you guys have a process for change orders, like if it's under so much, you don't have to approve it, but we want you to see it all. And then we want you to get an update on where sort of the numbers are now that everything's done this summer.
We'll get it on Wednesday.
Yeah, next Wednesday, the.
During your meeting.
Oversight committee will review all the details of that, but that's really the purpose of that is to review the change orders that were in place, you know, how it fit into the process wise. So you're at least aware of them and then we're going to revisit. If you remember, I think it maybe it was three weeks ago, we gave you sort of an updated pie chart of the contingencies, but we'll have more, we'll have, you know, sort of the, I won't say final numbers, but the much more updated numbers now that the summer works out, they get a better handle.
I guess my, my question was, right, we've gotten some feedback from the community that we're kind of answering, is this a good time or is that going to be in your update to give sort of, you know, broader feedback? Whether it's safety or, you know, I'm just saying, right? So this, these are the meetings that we would, you know, go into the community, is that where it's going to be or in the superintendent update?
Well, so one of those things that should be in there is, is going to be like the abatement, asbestos abatement, how we went over and we will be coming to the board asking for an additional eighty some thousand dollars. And that's going to be presented from Plant Moran Crescent, even though it is a district responsibility. We feel that we didn't want Paul, Paul Wells up there talking about this and me coming up there asking about this and confusing anybody, so we lumped it all in. And then the other thing is you're going to have an update on the health of wellness center. We're going to have Suzanne from French, she'll step up there and do a nice presentation on that.
Yeah, well, and that is what I was getting at. So things, so things, being on our committee, so things like Inocom Systems, right? You know, so, so things that we're getting questions on.
Yeah, that's not part of this presentation.
That's not, like getting updates on.
Yeah, this is just basically where the numbers at, based on the work that we've done. That's what this is, along with as.
Contingency numbers and digital projects.
So you had something too. Yeah, and we just, and we'll be going over that with the subcommittee as well around what our contingency spend is and what we're giving on it.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, and maybe this is not the meeting and maybe it's a future meeting, you had those end, end items, right? If we're looking at the chart, you know, and I'm not, and I'm not really concerned about like the boards, but like, again, the feedback I'm getting is Inocom Systems, the technology is, so we're not at the meeting.
Yeah, not at this particular meeting, but we could, number one, bond oversight committee for sure. We would want to sort of update, as you're saying, the progress chart and getting into, you know, the, okay, if, if technology, I said it's eighty to ninety percent, if it's ninety to ninety-five percent, what's still the ten, five to 10%, right? That's really what you're talking about. And so we can have that conversation if we need to bring that to the committee.
I, I, I think that item belongs at a board meeting, but probably not September 28th. Maybe too premature. I think we need to let the team work through the, you know, the bugs, the teething troubles, whatever, and maybe it's on the October board meeting, right?
Which is, which is fine. I'm just, how are we, the information that we're privy to every Wednesday, right? How is that, is that on the website for community members?
It is already on the website.
To kind of see, when people say.
It was updated yesterday.
You know, when people say, Paul, what's the update on the Inocom system across? I'm like, go to the website.
But, but we could, on the 14th, we could review that again, because if you remember at our August committee meeting, we actually did that, right? We gave sort of the update and we went through the chart, we had it up on the screen and we went through all the details. And so that October 14th meeting might be a good time to do the same thing.
Okay, then that's fine.
Yeah. So let's, let's add that to October 14th.
October 12th?
October 12th, I don't want to say.
That's okay.
You guys want to come on Saturday?
No.
Okay, Michelle says no.
No.
You know, that's fine. I think, I think, and maybe you're right, the end of October is when we're, not that we're closing loop, but those final things that if you remember from the chart that I think in our, what I'm envisioning is by the end of September, it was supposed to be done and so the end of October will be an update.
Exactly. Yep. Yeah, I think that timing works well.
Sorry, I'm also writing.
I've got, I'm taking lots of notes here.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, um, moving on, thank you for all those great comments. Eight, board business.
We're going to go ahead and strike that one out because we're going to move that to October 12th.
No, 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 this, the, that particular item.
The second reading.
What was that?
Well, I'm sorry, are you talking about the agenda item for?
Oh, no, no, no.
For plant presentation?
No, we're on board business, 8A, which is, I had a placeholder in there for the second reading of policies and we decided to move that to the 12th. So I have that on there and then the adoption of policies is slated now for the 26th.
12th. And then B is moved to the 26th?
What, I'm sorry?
No, A is moved to the 12th.
A is moved to the 12th and.
And the 26th.
Oh, and the 26th.
With the vote being on the 26th.
The vote, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. And thank you, John. Okay, so we're done with A. B placeholder for voting delegates for, okay.
I guess to Rebecca's point, is anyone planning on going?
Yeah, this is an annual ask of the MASB. So they're always looking to appoint a delegate and an alternate for their assembly. There's some information about it in Nova, so I can send that to you.
And what is it, Rebecca?
It's November the 9th and it's at 7:00 PM in Lansing.
And it's, it kind of kicks off their annual leadership conference in Lansing. So if, if nobody's planning on traveling to that conference, we don't need to vote on anything. So I don't think we need to decide right now, but I'm just putting it as a placeholder. We actually don't have to decide until like another month, but just want to put it on everyone's radar.
Okay.
And even if you're thinking about it, you can always, you can always, the board can always approve that person even if they decide not to go.
Correct.
Yeah, so if you're thinking, I'm not sure, I'm going to decide in two weeks, we can just put you on there for the vote or the alternative.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Howard used to love to go to Lansing, so we don't have that person, but someone could be that person.
So I think you spoke, is that John?
I was looking around for excitement.
Looking at you.
I wrote John, I wrote John down.
John, it's a who's who.
We can put you on and we can vote you in in case you want to go.
Oh, that's a, it's.
I think you liked this.
It is, it is a non.
Since Tarek's not here, I'll nominate.
Carolyn and Tarek.
It's a must.
Carolyn and Tarek.
Carolyn and Tarek.
You got your vote and your alternate, there you go.
Here's what you missed at the last meeting.
All right, so we'll, we'll come back. Can we keep it there?
We can keep it there. We can touch base closer too.
Yeah, someone will, someone will reach out with, to me and they'll say, choose me, right, Paul?
I will not be attending.
All right, so moving on to item C, placeholder for approving the.
Yeah, this is going to have to go to David because I tried to, I tried to fire it away.
These are part of, so these are charging carts for Chromebooks in the classrooms. So there's nothing real sexy or fancy.
What's, what is, what's a charging cart?
You put it in and it, you put all the computers into the park and it charges all of them at one time.
I just, I just wanted to know.
Thank you, Michelle. That's exactly.
I mean, I just, I went to the US Open and they had now a new charging station where you could pull out and charge your phone.
Similar.
Very similar. Charge perches to us before.
Probably the biggest takeaway is this is, this is what we normally, we had planned on for those. And what's probably more important, particularly when we look at our elementary buildings, we, we haven't designed those spaces yet. And so before, prior, when we had say Chromebooks or iPads or whatever, those charging stations sat on a whatever shelf or ledge you could get on. This will move it all to a cart that's flexible, movable, so they can move it out of their classroom, they can move it anywhere in the classroom that they needed to. And then of course, it also has data and electrical if you plug in, it can get updates, that kind of thing.
What's the funding source on that day?
That is the bond.
And this is, is this for elementary or K8?
This is actually K8, yeah. And we're leveraging what we currently have as well, so this is not a full-scale replacement. We are, we will leverage, I mean, we have stuff that's still in the 10, 12-year range that's still working and we're still using those through this program.
Okay. Anything else for that agenda? Moving right along.
Exciting item coming up.
Yes. Item October, I mean, item October, item J, the October study session agenda.
This one has a lot of changes now from when I printed it out.
Okay, um, so let me not use the sheet, you want me to go to the computer?
No, we can still look at the sheet, that's fine.
Okay, item number one is all the same, two is the same, superintendent search update. Do we normally have an update from the, from you?
I would, I would.
We forgot you.
Yeah, that's right.
We need an update for superintendent update. There's a search committee update, but no superintendent update.
I'm here till October 31st, Rebecca, I don't know if you're.
I timed it.
Did you give me a hint or what?
He always has an update.
Showing you the.
Hang on, um, this is October 12th.
Study session.
Yeah, so.
We can add, I wasn't sure if Randy would have anything to share at that meeting. I should have known, but I will add it back.
Randy said he has 12 things already mapped out.
Okay.
Okay, uh, financial audit. We'll be good with that?
So this is a little different this year, just so you know, we're, we're, I think last year they would come in and do a formal presentation to you, and we thought maybe there was some value in them coming earlier, so you could have questions, and digging a little bit more with some of the details. You know, talk a little bit, uh, about, you know, what, what sort of the trends have been for the, the finances and so on, more than just the I'll call dry, you know, I mean, I know you wanna read about footnote number seventeen in the financial statement, but, um, gives you an opportunity to dig in a little bit.
Is there something that we should know about?
Does he like the footnotes?
He does.
I should have known.
Is there something we need to know about footnote seventeen?
No, there is, hopefully there's no footnote number seventeen.
I'm gonna look for a footnote.
Exactly, yeah, but it's just an opportunity for you to, uh, to have a more, uh, um, uh, I don't know, I'm trying to think of the right word, uh, meaningful discussion, as it relates to the numbers and where the budget ended up this year, and, and where we're sort of sitting. So, um, and then what would happen on the twenty-eighth is they would come in and do, you know, they come in and do the pie charts and the graphs and all that stuff, but it's more of like a fifteen-minute presentation for a community on the, on the twenty-eighth. The fourteenth would allow you a little bit more time just to dig in and, and have a little bit more conversation around our financial condition.
And that's, and that's obviously from a, that's a Plant Moran high level. And I don't know if it's this meeting or, or future meeting, one of the things that I know we've always talked about, and I know it's in a goal, what about the budget itself? Like, where do we spend our money, what strategically are we doing? Is, is that worthwhile to have a meeting?
I would say definitely, well, I'm just talking for myself now, I would say definitely yes. Um, uh, and, and so, but I would see this being more of where's the trends, do it looks like we're in good shape, does it look like we're gonna have, you know, trouble in three years, you know, what are our enrollment trends look like? You know, where's our revenue versus our expenditures, right, that's the big issue, right? You, if they get in the wrong way, even if you have fund balance, it only lasts for so long. Having that sort of conversation of, I mean, 'cause I know you're in solid financial condition here, but it's about that, okay, well, let's look at the last five years, and what do the next maybe two or three years look like? And, you know, the, the sort of the starting point is, well, where did we end up last year?
Right.
That's what Plant Moran will provide, and then I wouldn't mind then just having a little bit more discussion, say, okay, what, what does the big picture look like here? So then when we have those future discussions, we, you know, we're, we're, we have a better idea of, oh my gosh, we got a lot of money next year, or oh my gosh, these, these funding sources are dry up, we better, we better plan for that.
This is an audit versus the audit.
Yeah, this is more of the audit, not the forecast.
No, I, I get it, um, but I'm saying, you know, not that discussion, but, you know, we used to have, obviously, in in-between, like a forecast, like where are we next year?
Yes.
Our budget update.
Put that together for.
There will definitely be a mid-year budget amendment, uh, that will come after the fourth Friday coming.
When do we normally have our budget update, what month? Do you remember?
I've heard January, December, January.
What month do we normally have our budget update?
It's varied, but I would say probably January this year.
And in other words, I meant, right, we've had, we've had, we've had significant transitions.
You want to do that, that's very important.
Uh, it would assure us and the community that, that forecast, that, I don't know when that's happening, I get it.
I would agree a hundred and ten percent.
But we should probably sooner rather than later kind of get someone, and I know we, we hired, thanks to everyone involved, someone to come in who has a, a deep background, we should probably get that. Because that is, people in the, people have expressed concern, you know, with all the transition, how are we doing financially, and the answer, I, I know is solid, but we need to have that, not just the audit, but sort of the forecasts.
Right.
I think the audit could help.
Where is the money being spent now versus where was it being spent a year or two years ago? Has it, has it shifted?
Yeah, there's some different analysis to have there, the big first step will be because, you're right, you, you have a whole new business office, basically.
Yeah.
And so, are the projections that were done last spring, are they still holding, are they still holding water?
And that's, and that.
And then you start getting those questions, okay, well, how, where are we spending the money?
And I would, I would, Michelle, if we can, put it on the November study session, you know, like the November study session meeting, like the, you know, the following one, you know, and that's two months, that's a month and a half from now, right? It's more than enough time. What?
Maybe December? I'll put a place.
Yeah, we, we won't have a budget amendment in November.
I'm, I'm just saying, it is, it is a concern, I mean, I know we're, I know opening the buildings was a major concern, the second concern that I'm hearing is you've been, you know, people in the, you know, yeah, that's significant turnover, financially is everything.
Absolutely.
Even with, right, everything going on with the new buildings, we don't know what's being spent, and, and so.
But, but that's, all that should come out in the audit, because, or a lot of that should be covered in the testing that Plant Moran's doing.
For this year.
For this year.
Not forecasting.
Correct, not the forecasting, but the spending bit, and to make sure controls aren't placed, I did talk with Donna Hanson before Karen Lott about that very topic.
Yeah, I'm just saying, for this year, and I'm not five years, but next year.
Yeah.
Right, you know, sooner rather than later, we just gotta get on top of it, we don't wanna have a, which I'm not saying we are, a Birmingham surprise, I'm sorry.
Don't.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that, but we don't wanna have a surprise out there, you know, that we're not expecting because we had significant turnover in our, in our finance.
Yes, as your interim superintendent, who's trying to put together a new business staff, I agree one hundred and ten percent.
Yep.
Good points. So, we, we will have an update soon, if the November is an option, but we're gonna place hold for December.
Yep.
Okay? You got that, Rebecca? We're good, okay.
We need, before I forget, we need to add in, because it's October, we're in October now, interim, um, for a discussion to be voted on in, in the October.
We're gonna discuss that at the next board meeting.
Hold that for me.
We're gonna discuss all this at, at the next board meeting.
Yeah, hold that point.
Okay.
So, um, study session placeholder, spring twenty twenty-three assessment data.
Is that gonna be ready? So, we are going to, we have a placeholder for the formal presentation, um, that we do annually, and that will take place October twenty-sixth. But the thought is, um, you know, we're trying to like keep those meetings a little bit shorter and have more engaged conversation here. Todd, you wanna talk a little bit about that, the part about, um, about having the material in the folder, and then people can ask more questions about unstopp and S A T and the spring assessments?
Yeah, what we were looking at is, we, we have enough time to be able to assemble all of that data, but right now, that's all that we've had time to do is put that data together, so if we move that along in a little bit further um, into October, that we'd be able to also provide some, um, you know, uh, not necessarily analysis with it, but also some commentary around it. So if we do something at the October study session to give us more time to dig into it and ask questions, and then we might decide at the end of that what a presentation might look like at a regular study session, like these are the highlights that we should share um, at a regular board meeting. So our hope was that if you give us a, a couple more weeks, rather than coming to the end of September with, okay, here's everything that we've gathered, we could do a study session, dig into it together a little bit, and then, um, look at the end of October to do more of a formal presentation.
I'm okay with that, I just wanna make sure that it gets into that folder. The shared folder with plenty of time for us to look at, so we can ask the proper question.
We are working, and they're already working on it, but yeah, I'll make sure.
Because if it gets in there, um, you know.
You'll get it in that Friday.
October twelfth at three o'clock, it's gonna be, not.
Yeah.
Helpful.
Noted. Okay, yep, it'll be in the board update, the Friday before the study session, like reverting back to our regular schedule.
Board update. Wrote that down.
We're on D.
Okay, I was updating wrong with you. So, um, D placeholder for the master planning. Is this different than the, what's on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
And it is truly a placeholder right now, so.
So is that, and I forget, right, I thought in order for Alan to go for the grant, I thought we approved the master plan.
You approved the recreation plan.
Okay, so, this is the.
The Bowers Farm and Nature Center.
Oh, we approved the district recreation plan, now this is the Bowers Farm and Nature Center master plan.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll have to see if this, you know, we have questions.
I mean, it is a placeholder, there's a firm that is actually engaged to do the work, so I have a placeholder in a couple places, and there's also been discussion about, um, you know, community meetings, so it's really up for discussion.
Did we already see the master plan before, and it, and it was under review, is that what we're?
You may have seen something along with it.
Alan did present.
Yeah, he did.
Yes.
Present, uh, you presented the recreation plan. That's what I, you know, I know everyone's giving me looks to ask questions, that's what I just asked.
I don't know why, I felt like it was, it was a master plan as well. Okay, maybe, maybe not.
For Alan, he has not presented this to you, from the study that was completed, so at some point in time, there was a study that was approved to be completed, and it's done now, and so.
I think the question will be for Alan, what is the difference between the recreation plan and the.
Which is what we'll discuss, right?
Better prep him for that one, that's a good one. But we're actually thinking maybe it would make more sense, because the, the plan could be, it could be quite a lengthy conversation on a very specific piece of what you guys deal with, which is this, right? It's this over here of all this. And so, we were actually thinking it might make sense to have a community meeting for that, you guys actually have reps on the board who are members of that, it's, uh, Carolyn and Tarek, I think, of course.
Tarek and Carolyn.
Carolyn and Tarek.
But they're the reps on it, and so they could go to that community meeting, and anybody in the community interested, and, you know, and they would hear, you know, there might, it might be like an hour presentation with a half hour of questions, and then Tarek and Carolyn could come back, we're, that's what the placeholder's for, and could sort of give you guys a summary of what.
Okay, yeah, 'cause it might be a lot of financing.
Yeah, 'cause you've got two other meaty topics on there.
On this day?
Yeah.
Yes.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna, a planned twenty-minute turns into forty-five minutes to an hour presentation after we
I think it's possible.
dug deep into meat and budget.
That's fine, I'll.
I keep on saying, see? You didn't correct me.
I knew what you meant, I already said it.
We all know which one. It's awful, I can't stop.
I thought you said meaty, I was processing it, I forgot about the meat.
Oh my gosh, clearly I haven't forgotten about the meat all the time.
So we'll take this, we'll, we'll take this one off, is what I'm hearing, right, on October twelfth, and then it'll be part of just like committee reporting?
Okay. Okay. So that was E. So we're good with E, thank you, Rebecca.
Sure.
F, October twenty-sixth, that's standard, and G, standard.
Right, so the only ones left then that aren't on there.
Plant Moran Cressa.
What was that?
Plant Moran Cressa?
No, no Cressa, just.
No.
No?
It's, it's already on there, it's the audit.
So, we're gonna add.
I have a question.
I just wanna clarify something really quick, are.
They're not on here.
The community partnership committee that we added, is this gonna be a standalone agenda item or a part of the committee report?
Committee report.
Okay, and then the board intern program goals standalone item or part of the committee report?
Standalone item.
Say it one more time.
Standalone item.
Okay.
And then a, a question, and you can answer it, is the interim, is the interim superintendent committee, we're not on the October twelfth agenda?
We. You are not currently.
No, I mean, should we?
We should.
Standalone item?
Oh, because we do need to talk about, but it's usually at a board.
The interim, right.
We could put it on our board meeting in two weeks.
So it's at the board, right now, we had, just have the, um, I thought it was in the superintendent search committee.
So a subgroup.
So right, right now, it is, right, the interim, you know, um, the, the interim committee, um, has an update. Are we updating on the, on the September twenty-eighth meeting or October twelfth?
Yes.
Okay, so I will, I will add that to.
So, so September twenty-eighth we're updating, so that has not been added, and that needs to be.
I think we just, I just put it all together under the superintendent search update, my brain went to one location.
Got that?
We're covered, we're good. Thank you for that, Paul, because I was like, no, it's already on the other agenda.
I didn't see it.
I think the only last one is, I just wanna confirm to the bond oversight committee, like a report that should be a standalone item, or is that part of the committee liaison?
It's part of the committee liaison.
So the only standalone item is the board intern program goals, correct?
Yep.
Okay. That's it?